Folks, we're back. This is Steve Sanson, Jim Jones with Veterans and Politics. Today, our guest is going to be Bob Behrs, candidate for Las Vegas City Council Ward Number Four. But before we get to our guest, Jim, you have any rants?
Uh, no, not really any rants. I just forgot a couple of things last week before we left. Before we left, before we left, I forgot to wish everybody a happy fourth, upcoming fourth. So I hope everybody had a good fourth. And then on Thursday was my brother Mark's birthday.
Happy birthday, Mark!
So that was good. And other than that, I just think it's interesting. I constantly hear all these people tell me how they want nothing to do with politics. They don't want to talk about it. And everywhere I go, grocery store, wherever I'm at, somebody's talking about politics.
Exactly.
So I guess my point all along comes true. Life is actually politics, whether we like it or not. So if people say they're not interested in politics, and then here's the other thing, too. Honestly, like if you run into me and you start asking me political questions, you're gonna get my opinion. Don't get mad at me for giving my opinion if you ask for it.
Do you know the interest rates on homes were two, two and a quarter percent? And now it's five and a quarter percent?
Yeah, well, I mean-
Ain't that some sad crap?
Better get a loan while it's still cheap.
Yeah.
Well, eventually, the thing that's ironic about that, Steve, is like now, a lot of people were complaining about, you know, how prices on everything are going up. And which I do, too, because, you know, it costs more to live. But it's just interesting that like all along when COVID was out, unfortunately, and COVID was a bad thing, but it was also an excuse for the government to give out a lot of so-called free money. And there isn't such thing. So with all these stimulus checks and everything that were constantly kept coming out, and then people not, uh, people not having to pay their bills because of, you know, the quarantine and all that, I mean, what did people think was gonna happen at some point? Like at some point, we have to get some of that money out of circulation. So inflation was bound to happen. So I just think that people need to be a little more cognizant of what is going on, because sooner or later, you're gonna pay for it. So soon as somebody says it's a stimulus bill, or it's free money, there's nothing free.
Well, it's gotta be inflation before-
People need to start paying attention.
There's gonna be an inflation, then we're gonna have a recession. That's what's gonna happen. I'll give a couple of years.
Yeah. Well, we are talking to like the foremost expert when it comes to government finance.
I think it's been longer than two years. I think it's been longer than six years. I think if you look, it's been 80 years-
Yeah.
-since the United States federal government has paid back a penny that it's borrowed.
And then they want us to pay back those student loans.
Right? I'm still waiting to get forgiven for that.
And it's not that, it's not that things cost more, it's that your dollar is worth less.
It's worth less, yeah.
All right, true. Bob Behrs?
Meantime, I think we still need to have a strong local government in place-
Right.
-if the federal government gets a little wobbly through bad policy.
Well, you know my, you know my position. I've said it a million times, right? If you aren't paying attention to anything, pay attention to the city council races. And that's not because you're here, Bob. I've been saying that for years.
Where the rubber meets the road.
I say it every time.
All right, regular everyday services. These responsible for clean water in, dirty water out, and appropriate 911 response, decent streets outside your house.
And my trees.
Little parks and recreation activity. And that's essentially what we do. The biggest part of that is the 911 response, as far as the dollars that we spend. When you fill in a pothole, that's a one-time expense. But all of our 911 response, which ranges at the city of Las Vegas, from our very capable fire and rescue service, to Metro, to your favorite, the city jail, that you and I have a story about.
Oh, yes.
All those are people, and they have to come back to work next week. And so it's an ongoing expense, and that turns out to be about two-thirds of what the city spends its money on. I left out the, our municipal court, which is another element. But that's the biggest thing that, that the city does, is a 911 response.
Mr. Behrs, could you tell people about you who don't know you?
Uh, I grew up here. In fact, I grew up probably less than a mile's walk from your studio, as a matter of fact. Ended up getting a degree, or a high school diploma from Clark High School.
Clark.
And ended up getting a business degree from UNLV. Took a 10-year route to get that degree, because I took time off to be a radio news person, basically. So I did some time in journalism and-
What, you and Ron Futre?
Say it again?
Said you and Ron Futre.
I knew Ron back when. Actually, Ron and I face-to-face met the first time at a Joe Satriani concert. It was the G3 concert here in Las Vegas. Joe Satriani is a musician's guitar player. So it was basically just a room full of 8,000 musicians with Joe's band. It was pretty cool. Anyway, uh, yes, I know Ron. Ended up going to work for a big CPA firm and spent three years, learned some CPA business stuff. Ended up starting a company that specialized in computers being applied to business management. This was just at the time that IBM's mainframe business was starting to stall. And we brought it down. We helped bring it down. Because we sold multi-user PC-based systems that were more capable than the System 36 and AS400 systems that were out there. To any rate, sold that company, went to work for a business services HR provider, basically, where I ran the sales department. And simultaneously served in the state legislature. So for those who are new to Nevada, we have essentially, it's not quite a volunteer-
What year were you in the Assembly?
1998 to 2003, or '04 in the Assembly.
Assembly?
Yeah. And then I did another session, another two sessions in the Senate after that. Total of five sessions over 10 years. But it's very much a volunteer, passion-driven thing. You get paid less than minimum wage for doing the job. You're gone for four months every two years. So that's kind of my professional background. I've been a CPA for 30 years in Nevada and specialized for a while in computerization of businesses, and then in auditing small public companies. On the government side, it goes back to middle school, where my mom remembers me being the first one out of the house to grab the newspaper off the driveway every morning, and I'd read it before school.
How old were you?
I, this was at Cashman, so 13, 14, something like that. So I've had this interest in the way the world works for a long time. And got elected to the legislature in 1998, served 10 years there, took a few years off, joined the Las Vegas City Council in 2012, I think. Served until 2017, and now running for the city council once again.
You also ran for governor.
Uh, somewhere along the way, I ran for governor. Yeah, that was a 2006 election, I think. That was a five-way Republican primary that included-
Five? I only remember three.
Nope, there was five. You're forgetting the Asian porn star who'd retired.
Oh, yeah.
And run, and I was pleased-
She invited me to a pajama jammy party.
No doubt, no doubt. But that, on a serious note, that race included our congressman, our lieutenant governor, and myself, who at the time was serving in the state senate. So it was a pretty quality field, I think, as they go. And a fairly pitched campaign across the state. And in the end, I finished second, which is now a point of really inconsequential trivia. You have to finish first in the primary in order to move on to the general.
Joey Gilbert.
And then a couple of years ago, I got asked to run for state treasurer in 2018. And won the primary and lost the general by one and a half percentage points to Zach Coning, who is currently our treasurer, and in my opinion, has served quite ably and ethically in the office. So I think we're fortunate to have, to still have his service. So that's the political background, and done a few things along the way in that capacity. One of them was, it was you came to me shortly after I got elected to the city council and asked me to meet you at the bail window for the jail.
At the bail window.
I was fortunate enough to never have actually stood at the bail window at the jail in my life. But this is where moms and dads and brothers and sisters stand for a period of time in order to bail out their errant children or siblings. Most frequently, that's the situation. And as you pointed out, there was no shade, where the regular citizens had to stand to make bail for their loved ones. And I took that back to City Hall, and I think four months later, or six months later, we had a nice shade structure over where people stand to bail out their loved ones. So thank you for that. A lot of it-
Thank you.
You know, a lot of it is, your elected officials can't be everywhere you are. And so you'll notice something out of whack in the way government provides a service. And then the local government governance board doesn't really know that that's the situation. And so the moral of that story is, even if you're not you, when you see something out of whack, reach out to your elected representative and report it.
I do that with Brian Knitson all the time.
Yeah. Well, and it's true. We rely, elected officials rely on citizens to be the eyes and ears and the feedback mechanism, so we can correct things that are out of whack as we move forward. Probably the biggest one that saved taxpayers an interesting chunk was the stadium downtown. 10 years ago, the city of Las Vegas City Council was on a big push to take $50 million out of the Parks Maintenance Fund and give it to a developer who promised to build a stadium in Symphony Park, even though we didn't have a team for it. And that ended up getting approved on a four-to-three vote. And I started a petition drive the next day to put it on the ballot. That's all we wanted, was an opportunity to let the city council know that this is what we were thinking. And we gathered enough signatures. The city filed a lawsuit to change, actually, they didn't file a lawsuit. They simply changed the number of signatures that were requiring us to get, to move the bar, as it were. Which, by the way, we hit the moving bar, and it was set to be on the ballot, but there was a mayoral campaign underway that year. And mayoral campaigns pay attention to public sentiment very closely. And the public sentiment was against doing this. And so the, the plan was then withdrawn, basically. And the money ended up going into our parks. You can see it today. I see it when I drive over the Summerlin Parkway Bridge at the 95. As you're coming back down on the Summerlin side, right on the right-hand, on the north side of the road, there's a city park that was nothing but a scuzzy-looking piece of grass 10 years ago. And today, it has a complete workout equipment facility, a number of pickleball courts, and a much nicer field.
I remember we talked about the pickleball last time you were on.
Because those dollars went into the Parks program where they were supposed to go. So I've had a few successes and look forward to the opportunity to bring more adult supervision in the room.
So you were a city council for Ward Two, right?
Yeah.
What happened?
My dad died.
My condolences.
This was five years ago. He was a big Steve Sanson fan, as you know.
Frank.
Yep.
Love that Frank Behrs guy.
Sarah and I were standing in his house in Sun City with the For Sale sign hanging on the front yard. And we looked at each other and said, "Shit, we're old enough to move in here." Because we'd only moved next to Sun City to be by the babysitters. My mom and dad were original Sun City residents, and Sarah's parents were original Sun City residents.
Your wife.
Yes, my wife. We just wanted babysitters. So we moved just south of Sun City, and that's where I'd lived for 30 years. And then suddenly, we're over 55. I don't know how that happened. But here we are. And so we moved in and really like it a lot, very, very much. So-
So it's 55 and up?
Yeah, that's our last home.
September, I'll be, I'll be there, babe.
You can be a neighbor in September. So that's, that's what happened. And it turns out that the line between Ward Two and Ward Four, although our houses, my old house and my new are only a mile apart, the ward line was in the middle. So I was not eligible to run for the special election in, that Victoria Seaman won after Steve Soroka crashed and burned the city's wallet.
Yes, I remember.
And so I just, I was not in Ward Two anymore, and we were not gonna move. So that, and then Stavros termed out finally, and it's, it's my neighborhood. I care as much about it as I cared about my old neighborhood. So I decided to throw my hat in the ring shortly after the city was found liable for taking the Badlands Golf Course and ordered to pay $45 million for the first 25% of the land in December.
Yeah, you were against that whole thing, right?
Well, I was simply following the law. It's pretty simple if you actually read the law and follow it. It gets complicated when you don't want to follow the law.
Amazing how that works.
And that's exactly what happened. The city council voted four-to-three to deny access to any of that land from Charleston, Alta, Walupi, or Rampart, which are the boundaries of the land. Effectively denying access to the land. That's actually one of the verbatim definitions of taking-
Were they trying to use eminent domain?
In the Nevada Constitution. And to bring this back full circle, it was the same, different people. But the city of Las Vegas City Council voted to take a family's business downtown and gave it to a guy who'd been buying dinners for the mayor. Because he said he was gonna turn it into the next big thing, which it was the next big thing, right up until it went into bankruptcy. Which is a recurring theme in city of Las Vegas redevelopment of downtown. It's a much better helper than a doer. And so that resulted in a lawsuit against the city, and the family won what was then a substantial amount of money. The family's attorney then, on his own, drafted Pistol, the people's initiative to stop taking our land. And qualified through the signature gathering process to appear on the ballot. And the first time, the citizens approved it. But to amend the constitution, which is what he was proposing, the state constitution, which was what he was proposing to do, it has to go through the vote of the people twice. And so two years later, the people voted it in a second time, and it became part of the constitution. It's not a law, it's the Nevada Constitution. And it's pretty plain if you read it.
Right.
Yeah. So the city council, I was able to stop them from taking this by pointing out that it's illegal. When I left, I don't know, a year later, they took it. And so now that bill is coming due through a series of lawsuits. The appeal right now is pending before the State Supreme Court. A mandatory settlement conference was held about a month ago. Behind the scenes, the city is maneuvering to find some settlement. So it does appear that the city recognizes that it's wrong, but it doesn't appear that it has the political will on the governance board to stand up and say, "Oops, sorry, we made a mistake." No fair complaining if you don't have a solution going forward, so let me offer one. And that is to give them back what we took and not pay out all the money. And we're still gonna have to pay out a substantial amount of money, because they've got a whole bunch of legal fees. When you fight the government, it's the most expensive undertaking ever, because the government just piles free lawyers on. They're not free, they cost taxpayers. And it doesn't matter how bad the cause is, if the political will is there, they'll do it. So we're probably up to $6 to $10 million in city internal resources spent on this, plus the $45 million for the settlement. And that's for 25% of the land. If it gets up to $190 million, 45 times four, then you're talking a bigger amount of money than we pay for Metro every year. You're talking about a bigger amount of money than the budget for the Fire and Rescue Department takes. So it's a huge amount of money, and if the city had to pay it out, it would, it would be a definite noticeable decrease in the city's scope of operations.
Would it bankrupt the city?
Um, no. No, cities always have more money coming in. And so the worst that would happen is if the city doesn't have the funds saved up to pay for it, then they would pay for it out of future income, which reduces the amount of money to hire policemen, firemen, paramedics, and all the other things that compose the services we collectively have agreed is important for the city to provide.
What are your accomplishments? Because you were, you were a city council ward number two. And how long were you there for?
Five years.
Five years. Before, I'll ask you about your accomplishments while you were in city council. There is a term limits for city council, no matter if you're mayor or city councilman. And it's three terms, four years each, right? So a total of what, 12 years?
Yep.
Since you were in the city council for five years, and then-
That counts.
That counts? Oh, so it doesn't-
So I would have, I've served one term under term limits, and I would have two more.
Okay, okay. I figured it would start all over again, since it wasn't consecutive.
No, it doesn't start. It's cumulative, not consecutive.
Got it.
And so, yeah, I'd have two more terms on the city council. It's not clear, it's not, it's not, it wasn't anticipated. There's a lot of things that weren't in, a lot of fine details that were not anticipated in the ballot questions that the citizens passed to implement term limits, by the way, which I support fully, and would like to see extended to the federal government. But, but let's keep it on topic. It's unclear if I were to move to Henderson, if I could run for the Henderson City Council, even though I did three terms on the Las Vegas City Council. It's also a little unclear if a council member can run for mayor, and those are separate term limits. There's one court case having to do with the city of Sparks, where they determined that the jobs are so similar-
In Reno?
In Reno, that, that-
The Supreme Court came down with that.
That's correct. The, the, the jobs are so similar that term limits count the same, whether you're on the council or sitting, or sitting in the mayor's seat. However, in Nevada, every city has a unique city charter. It's, each one is a separate state law controlled by the legislature. And it's not clear that that decision in, in Sparks would apply to the city of Las Vegas, or to Henderson, or to North Las Vegas. No one's tested it yet.
Well, one of the reasons why I'm bringing it up, because there, there is a, a mayor's race in North Las Vegas.
This year.
Yeah. And the city councilwoman, Pamela Goines, already did three terms, or in her third term.
And so-
As city council, she's running for mayor.
And it's, it's not clear, so the enforcement mechanism has always been your political opponent files a suit alleging that you, you're violating term limits and asking you to remove, be removed off the ballot.
Are they the only ones that have stand-ins or any-
I don't know.
Any resident in North?
I don't know what the law says about if any resident can challenge that, or if it has to be the opponent, or if even if, if the Attorney General's office could file a suit alleging that this provision of state constitution has been violated. I don't know the answer to that question, and I don't, haven't been following Pamela's race too closely. So I don't know if any of those issues have been brought up in her race.
And the, the Nevada Secretary of State has jurisdiction over the elections, over any municipality or any municipality-
Well, they do, but the legislature has stripped the Secretary of State of all investigators. So they-
Really?
Yeah. Oh, yeah. That was a number of years ago. Yes. So I don't know that the Secretary of State has the ability to, in fact, I'm certain that the Secretary of State doesn't have the ability to step in. They cannot file a lawsuit. They don't have any lawyers. They have to go to the Attorney General's office and ask for permission. Ask, actually ask for someone to be assigned to this thing for them to do.
That's crazy. It's kind of like tying their hands, basically.
It was a deliberate tying of hands that I think may date back to when Dean Heller was the Secretary of State.
Oh, wow.
But it may have been the next Secretary of State after that.
Okay. What, what were your accomplishments when you were council ward two?
Well, um, there's many little things. You and I have already talked-
The bail.
The, the bail window to the saving the Parks and Recreation Budget. In between, there's any number of areas that I touched. I was, I got pretty actively involved in the renewal of the garbage contract, which the city manages. And as a result, we've continued, since I did that, and it's been almost 10 years, to enjoy about the lowest garbage rates of any major southwestern metropolitan area. People who've moved here within the last five years all remark on how much less garbage service costs here than it does where they came from. Especially if they came from the West or a big city. So there's lots of things, but I think overall, I provided a, um, a serious, um, kind of overlay, and I'm not the only member who does this. We have members on the city council who are very serious about managing the provision of services. And some that seem only interested in, in their next media bite. And not so much on the overall delivery of city services. I pushed the balance toward managing the city services and not being frivolous with the office. That's intangible, but you know, you've got a situation now where two members of the council got in a fight, in council, a physical fight in council offices. And we still have litigation pending over that. There's a subset of people that consider not who was right or who was wrong in that dispute, but just the fact that the dispute is out there makes the whole city council look less serious. And so I, um, don't play that way. It's just not my style. I don't, I don't physically confront. Just not my style. And so it's that, it's that overall-
You wait for them at their house.
No, I organize a signature petition. So I mean, it's, it's, it's intangible, but as I put it in the shortest number of words possible, I plan on returning an adult into the room.
Got you. Yeah. That's pretty much what I was gonna, what I was gonna say. I know, well, first off, I'm really glad that you're running. Because I think you can make more of an impact when, with your knowledge and your background, being actually involved in the process, rather than, you know, just bringing stuff up. Well, I know it's not necessarily your job, once you get elected, to do it, but you had said something the last time when you were on, and you were talking about how complicated, or not necessarily complicated, but just how much different the Nevada state constitution is compared to a lot of other states. So even though as a city councilman, that's not necessarily your job, but one of the things that I was wondering, if you get elected, is there anything you could do in that elected position to at least try to get some of this stuff out to people, so they can kind of start understanding this stuff? Because it's our responsibility as voters-
To be aware of it, to educate yourself, but it's hard to do. Yes, I do do that. And I speak in front of a group ranging in size from one to as big as they can get, whenever anybody wants, about whatever aspect of government they are seeking to learn about. The most important part of every single time that I've spoken, in my opinion, comes about halfway through- comes about halfway through when I say, okay, that's all I've got to say. Anybody got any comments or questions? Because that's really where it's hard, it's very difficult for a group leader to encompass all the concerns and questions that all their members have about government in one sentence.
Or, yeah, sure.
And so um, I've found it both educating and educational for me to get feedback from people who vote. Yeah. Um, so yeah, I'll be out there on the soapbox that they give me uh saying pretty much the same common sense stuff that I've been saying my entire political career. Um, government is important, there's lots of things that it does that nobody else would do. I mean, you might find a volunteer to sweep up your gutter once in a while. But it's really hard to get that person every three weeks all year long, especially in the summer, to actually go do that. So we have to have people we pay to do that and that becomes their job. And that's what government is. Um, nevertheless, it's real easy for government to get way out over its skis, as Bill Ragio used to say.
Right.
Uh, and uh, try to take on fixing things that either has no ability to fix uh, or it doesn't have the competence to fix. Because government does really well sweeping your street once a month. But it does a lot less well scheduling your doctor visit and making sure your doctor gets paid reasonably. Now that we've had 10 years um, plus of uh, the nationalization of healthcare, I think we're starting to see that. Clearly, it was a lie that you can keep your doctor.
Right.
Because nobody has the same doctor today as they had 15 years ago. Even if you've been in Las Vegas for 50 years.
Especially if you're a veteran.
So, so uh, there are, there are things, and that's one of, frankly, I think that's one of the problems that we have as a society. Uh, we've been lulled into this um, into this belief that the CSI's will solve the murder at the 51st minute of the hour. Well, no, it does not always work that way. Life is not a Hollywood script. And uh, we start to think that the world works with that level of perfection where the ending is always happy and it always is arrived at promptly. And that's just not the case. There's a lot of stuff government just can't do very well because it's not in government's nature.
Right. Yeah, but one of the things that always gets me um, is that when people make the statement that you know, such and such is messed up or this isn't happening, what we need to do is get some government money in here. And like, I just, I don't get too in depth, I just tell them, I said, you know, that's your money, right?
Sometimes there are, there are things for which that is true.
Right, true.
There are things for which that is not true.
Right.
And that's where I see the great disconnect is, is people's personal definition of how competent government is and just how much better life could be if it did everything for us. Government just can't be your mother.
So you brought up something when we were, we were talking just a little bit earlier, but can you uh, like, for people that don't understand, what is the difference between being on the city council and being a county commissioner? Because people that I talk to are always confusing those two and they're not really sure like who does what or
Well, if you start feeling certain about that, then you should go spend a session in Carson City where you will return to your previous confusion.
See, that's why I like you, Bob, you got a sense of humor too.
The uh, the county commission and the city council does many of the same things for different uh, for citizens in different parts of the map. Okay, so if you're in the city of Las Vegas versus if you're outside city limits. Many of the things the county commission does are the same. However, if you dig deep into the state law that guides counties and cities, laws in the case of cities, uh, county commission does more. So the county commission has an entire department of um, child welfare uh, employees. And the city doesn't have any of those people. Um, that's because state law uh, charges the county with the provision of watching out for children with bad parents, uh, children with badly behaving parents. Let me specify that distinction. Uh, that the city just doesn't get involved with. Now, sometimes in, for example, the area of homelessness, um, the legislature puts responsibility pretty much on the county. Um, and the cities, both Henderson and Las Vegas, get um, feeling that the county is emphasizing support for the homeless population outside city limits to the detriment of the homeless population inside the city limits. And so cities will stand up their own homelessness response internal to their borders, even though that's a service that's somewhat outside the scope of city services as envisioned by the legislature. So yeah, it does get very confusing where those lines fall. They both have fire departments. They both have paramedics. Um, and then it gets even more complicated because 50 years ago now, is that correct? It is 50 years ago now. Citizens voted in Las Vegas, but not in Henderson or North Las Vegas to consolidate the city police department with the county sheriff's office. Today, we call that metro. And metro's jurisdiction is the city of Las Vegas and unincorporated Clark County. But not in the city of Henderson, they have their own police department, not in North Las Vegas, they have their own police department. So the lines are gray, they're not consistent, uh, and they're probably not written down anywhere either. At least the way we actually implement the provision of service.
What are the boundaries for Ward four?
Ward four is uh, Lake, Lake Mead on the south, basically. Um, down to about the 95. And then north, all the way around the 215 on both sides of the 215 for a quarter mile, all the way up to Farm and Wal, Farm and Wal, uh, Farm and Walupi, I think is the northernmost corner in Ward four now.
So you're in Centennial Hills as well.
Yeah, oh yeah. And then in the middle of all that is the Giant County Island, which is adding to the confusion as to who who's responsible for what. Um, but uh, so it's, it's, it's essentially from Lake Mead out to uh, Farm Road. Uh, the the northern areas of Ward four were in Ward six until uh, Thanksgiving of last year, when there was a city reapportionment following the legislative reapportionment. And um, and so the big population growth in city limits is occurring way out north by Kyle Canyon Road. Uh, there's a big master plan community going in up there, it's probably only one sixth built so far.
Ward six is the only, is the only ward that could also extend growth, right?
Oh, yeah.
The other wards are
Pretty much
Are pretty much
All of them have, all of them have areas of where there there's some vacant land and you could do something. Um, but yes, the city of Las Vegas's population growth is coming out of Ward six, which is causing all of the boundaries to shift north, basically.
And you, and they're bringing all kinds of people up in my area and I don't like.
Um, you probably
I live in that area.
You probably just haven't met enough of them yet.
Is that what it is?
That's what it is, yeah.
So, so, so Mr. Bears, um, if and when you become the city council again, what are your first things you you wanna accomplish?
Um, well, the biggest is
Because I know you're not running the run.
No, for fun, no. The biggest is I don't want the city to have to pay out 190 million dollars to this real estate developer.
How are you gonna do that?
Give them back what we took.
Which is?
Their land.
They haven't given it back yet?
No. No, they haven't.
Did they pay him for it or did they just take it?
They just took it.
They just, oh, no, that's some gangster stuff right there.
Um, this uh, is certainly uh, one interpretation, although you don't use the term gangster stuff lightly in Las Vegas. Uh, but yeah, that same sense of alarm and propriety being violated is what got me off my retirement couch.
Well, could you imagine if somebody just went, the the, was it the Ford that voted for this? Imagine somebody just went in their house and just took their shit? How would they feel?
Um, historically, people who've had government take their shit feel angry.
Yeah. And I remember you mentioned about the Neonopolis, you wanna elaborate a little bit about that?
Well, that was actually the uh, that was actually the family's drugstore that the city took. Uh, and Neonopolis has done okay once it went through bankruptcy. And the people who loaned the money to build it gave up getting paid back. Uh, many times people in that position will say, well, just give me the asset. They didn't even want the asset. Uh, so a enterprising fellow bought it out of bankruptcy and has been able to cobble together enough tenants uh, to keep the place open, more or less. Uh, it it's probably had its longest term major tenant of all time. Uh, right now is the Denny's on the first floor.
What what would you want the citizens of Ward four to know that's not mentioned yet on the show?
Well, we keep coming up with more stuff. I mean, uh, talking about debating government can go on forever. That's one of the reasons we don't like it is because there's no clear endpoint to it.
Yeah.
And 80% of political debates end up with the both sides thinking what they thought before, right? So that's why people get frustrated with it, but the, you think about it, the word politics, which even I hate politics and politicians. But stop and think about the word, it's all built on the word policy. That's really what politics is. It's talking about government policy. And if you don't think you're affected by government policy, I I wish I could live in your world with you. But you're fooling yourself.
Everybody's
Everybody's affected by the policies that our governments implement.
But people don't realize that.
They do, but then we start talking about it. And there's no end to that discussion. And at the end of it, 80% of the people participating haven't changed their mind about anything. Because that's kind of the way the world's gotten with the massive proliferation of video channels. Uh, and the ability to have open-ended discussions and they do go, and now with social media, it used to be only newspaper editors were battling back and forth across the country over this stuff. Now it's every one of us every day, if we're so inclined, plus it's pretty easy to turn off if you're not.
Right.
And I can understand wanting to turn it off because it's politics. But you gotta pay attention because you are deeply affected by policy.
You have anything else for Mr. Bears?
No, I could, I could talk to Bob all day.
Well, Bob Bears, I'd like to
Don't make promises.
Bob Bears.
Yes, sir.
Double B.
That's me.
I'd like to thank you so much for coming on the program.
Actually, three if you count them out and two Es, three Bs, two Es. It's like I'm
Card right now, but no.
It's like I'm the answer to a word search puzzle.
Well, could you look into the camera and Mark's gonna zoom in on you?
Hi, Mark.
And tell the folks why
Happy birthday, by the way.
Why they should go to the polls and put bring Bob back.
Bring Bob back, well
And your contact information.
My contact information is probably most important because the biggest thing in my experience in a city council office is customer service. Uh, that's always been a top of mind issue for me, uh, ranging from the management of the businesses that I've managed to my government service, so um, uh, a big piece of that is access. And so the part of that you need to know is my cell number, 702-592-8822. You Google my name, it'll be there. If you look up the campaign website, it'll be there. Campaign website beersnumber4lv.com. Um, meanwhile, experience is probably the first reason why I'm the preferred candidate here. The second reason is experience and the third reason is experience. Uh, I have served on the city council before and very familiar with everything that the city council does. And um, I think that you will appreciate the emphasis I bring to customer service. Um, because when you do get in that situation, and it probably only happens to 10% of the situ, of of the constituents or the citizens every five years or so, but when it's your turn to have some friction or conflict or need to communicate with government, frequently if you're not in it, you don't know who to turn to. Uh, turn to me and if I can't help it and the city can't help it, I will know if it's a legislative issue, if it's a county commission issue, if it's a state treasurer issue, uh, I will be able to direct you to the right person to find the answer to your question or the resolution to your problem. Although I will caution you, sometimes the resolution to your problem is not satisfactory. That's when it's time to get together with your friends and vote.
Mr. Bear, before we let you go, what's the taxpayer hero?
Uh, taxpayer hero award, I think was awarded to me after I attempted to bring the tax and spend control initiative, uh, which was a proposal to modify the state constitution to limit the state budget growth to the combined sum of population growth and inflation. Um, ultimately, although we gathered more signatures than were required all over the state, uh, that measure or the question was taken off the ballot by the Supreme Court because it would have constrained government spending.
Well, Bob, thank you so much for coming on the program. Jim?
Oh, I'm good.
All right, folks, that's uh, Bob Bears, he's a candidate for Las Vegas city council ward number four. And Bob, Bob has been a good guy for as long as we've known him.
Yeah.
Bob knows his stuff, Bob listens, and Bob is one of those things when you look up politicians, you see a picture of Bob Bears, although he don't like politicians. But Bob is the ultimate politician because Bob knows his stuff and that's what we want in in any government. Somebody that knows their stuff and Bob really knows his stuff. This is Steve Sanson, Jim Jones, a veteran of politics. Until next time.